Bucksport Planning Board Meeting to order for May 7, 2019. Roll call, Jeff.
Steven Bishop.
Here.
Ryan McDonald's absent, David Grant is absent, Steve Feig.
Present.
Edward Dulcher.
Here.
George Hansen.
Here.
Dave Ross.
Here.
Review and acceptance of the minutes from the April 16, 2019 minute meeting.
I would move that be accepted as written. Say.
All approved?
Any new topograph?
No, absolutely.
The Chair's report? None? Present? He's not present. And the Code Enforcement Officers' report?
They have no report this evening.
Okay. A limited public forum, an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport for items not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, unfinished business, none. New business, application for approval of an amendment to the Hillside Business Park subdivision to connect Park Street to Broadway, applicant John Wardwell.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just give you a little introduction of the purpose of this application.
Yes, please.
I'll start off by saying that the intent of this application is primarily to connect Prox Street and Broadway, but it also involves an extension of a road into the upper portion of this parcel for future development purposes. And I have on the screen right now, Google Earth image, just to show you what we're talking about, this is Route 1, and this is Park Street. And this part here is a five lot subdivision that was approved back in 1999, it was called the Hillside Business Park subdivision. So that was approved, and so far one lot has been developed with the Family Dollar subway and US Cellular complex. And this is Broadway here, Broadway comes across and stops right here by the Senior Center and the Bucksport Squares apartment complex. So as you see on the plan, the idea is to eliminate the cul-de-sac and extend Park Street up and intersect with Broadway, which would be extended into this area here, and then another road would be built up through here. This is a picture of the tax map that just shows you what we're talking about. Again, these are the five subdivision lots, this is the upper parcel where the road will be extended, and right next to it is Bayview Avenue, which is a residential neighborhood. We have John Wardwell, the property owner here this evening, as well as Sarah Nicholson from Woodard and Curran to answer any questions you may have. And... Nope, that's not it. There it is, right here. So I'll leave this up on the screen, you have copies of these in your packet, but in case the public has any questions or is curious about what's going on here, this is an illustration, so. You want to turn all those lights back on, Rich? Yeah, that's good, thanks. So the submissions includes a draft standards review for your consideration, and you have a form that you can use to do your findings when you get to that point. But your job is to make certain that this application meets all the applicable standards, and that it can be approved.
If I could, that's good. I did a little history, obviously, we rebuilt, Ed can help me out, we rebuilt the main section in there, what, late 90s and...
That was a state highway contract.
Yeah, yeah, it was a big project, and obviously, we all know what Route 1 is, it's just traffic everywhere. So, I looked at this particular parcel as a staging area, so we would have to bring in all the gravel, so we could stage it to get the job done, and the excavation, and just before the job was finalized out, I approached the state about putting a third lane in there. It had to be done, because there are no more entrances off a corridor like that, so... Then right after the project, I said, you know, I thought I might subdivide those five lots, and obviously, I never marketed it, I'm busy, I'm starting to slow down now, and now it's a chance to maybe develop some of them, but obviously, Tom Ellis, developer, bought the first lot, and also the site next door, Allen Grove, is it?
Alveron.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, and then obviously, jump ahead a few years, that's when First Atlantic was very, very interested in building on one of the upper pieces, and they was going to try to do it at the same time as they built the Ellsworth project for a cognitive scale, same design engineer, possibly same contractor, engineer, and... But obviously, we, we being Bucksport area, didn't get the beds, Penobscot had issues, Cows had issues, Ellsworth happened to get the beds, and then that's when, you know, back when Roger was here, we, you know, he was looking to build up above, and at that time, maybe just extend Broadway on its own, not continue up and go up, they needed 10 to 12 acres, and it was a good sized project, so. So anyway, pretty good location, and I just think that there's some pretty good opportunities coming up very soon for multiple uses, and hopefully, it's a positive impact on the town.
Thank you. I have, Mr. Chair, I have also a video that I took today driving up through, are you interested in looking at that?
Yes, please.
It lasts for about a minute and a half, so.
That area right there is also known as a dump-off area, right, Steve?
It is, yes, it is.
Unfortunately.
I've dragged plenty of kids up there.
If anyone needs to use tires, or anything else used, you might want rubber gloves.
So this is starting at the beginning, obviously, where Family Dollar is and heading up the hill.
I might add too, at the beginning, we just went by it, but obviously, this road was designed to have a sidewalk, the sidewalk is in to the left, five-foot sidewalk, gravel, from Tom Ellis's down, the sidewalk is built, obviously, the road needs to be surfaced, but we can't finish the sidewalk until we know where the curb opening, curb cuts are to propose businesses A, B, C, and D. So that's a five-foot sidewalk right there where the grass is growing on.
I think in the proposal, it said that you were going to do sidewalks on both sides of the road, is that correct?
No, no, just...
Just on one?
Just on left-hand side growing on.
So this is the cul-de-sac that's there now?
Can you slow down, Jeff, I'm getting dizzy.
It's almost over. I wanted to drive back, just to probably start to get the shore view there. You can see the water off in the distance. About there.
Okay, I hope I'm not, Mr. Chairman, I hope I'm not out of order, but speaking of views, Jeff, I've come from up on top, the top, very top piece by the power line, that elevation there is 12 feet higher than the K-3 school, the K-3 school, that's a younger kid, right?
Yeah.
And so you could imagine a second-story building of any sort, you can look right down onto the floor, and the bridge, it's kind of beautiful. There's a lot of ledge up there, unfortunately, but anyway, I just, the view was, the view was beautiful.
Does this particular property go beyond that power line?
Well, yes, it did, four acres, and Roger...
To the Gueto, to the Gueto, okay?
Yeah, right here, Roger bought this, Roger, the town bought this to...
For Bucksport Community Childcare Center, wasn't it?
No, 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 that's, no, this is just raw land. This is the childcare, I believe.
Yeah.
And this is, because this was old Buck Estates land that I was involved with, with three other guys back in the day, but really, I sold it to them cheap, and it didn't, I don't know why we needed it, so. But right here, this elevation is 12 feet higher than the, where's the school, is this it?
The school's that one right there, that's K-3, one to three.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Rachel Telecom, Economic Development Director, the town supports this project and has set aside $250,000 to help with the extension of Broadway, so the town council's already...
Is that, I see an article that Highway Department will be possibly active in supplying gravel, stuff like that, maybe, I don't know, so is that part of the 250, or?
That would, I don't have, I'm not privy to that information.
Was that in the paper?
John, did we put a water main up to the...
All utilities end at the, into the cul-de-sac, there's a hydrant right back into that.
Okay, I couldn't remember if there was a hydrant.
And, oh, you should see it on... Right above this here, you want to show on the sidewalk that continues up on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
Now, the 250 that proposed, or whatever is included, that would be the town's, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, portions to just bring over Broadway, nothing else, because, you know, in theory, they didn't want to do it, you know, the road would just go up through, so that would include, obviously, all the wetlands that, there's some wetlands in the middle of that, they're expensive, $3 a square foot, I'm the judge.
Something like that.
$3, $3 a square, $3.50 or $3.25 a square foot per thousand, right, sir? No, excuse me, per square foot, yeah, and so, so anyway, and obviously, if Broadway is extended, there'd be obviously water, sewer, hydrant, and obviously, granule fill, gravel, pavement, sidewalk. And if I could say one more thing about this particular design, since I've started this, I started with Woodard and Curran, and then Roger, Roger's engineer was Miller Associates, and when First Atlantic came about, he hired Mike to do a cost estimate, to come in just off Broadway, and out to the site that First Atlantic was interested in. Now, this design here is one of mine, right?
Yeah, it's all, it's Miller's design.
And I, for some very simple guy, I call it a T-turnaround, okay, a T, so, in other words...
You're talking about really, you weren't really looking at the second sheet at the top there, John, right? The T-turnaround.
Go ahead and show us.
Oh, that's the top, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There you go, and it's really a dog leg.
Oh, no, yeah, but let's, yeah, but let's continue down to the cul-de-sac. One design shows it coming right straight up, this is no different than Buck Estates and, is it Forest Hill and Woodland Heights? When we finished that, some people wanted it straight through.
Right.
I just, can you imagine, the car traffic and the kids speeding?
Exactly.
No way, and I, you know, and I thought the same thing right here, you know, irregardless if there's senior citizens, or millennials, or baby boomers, or workforce people, or something even bigger, you know, they could zip down here, right here, you know, we're going to have this, I assume it's soft side, and you guys got to figure out, I don't know if this should be heel or soft, but that's why I always like that, because I think it's safety, you've got to slow down. And the other thing too is, this continues, there's an easement that goes all the way to Bayview Avenue, all right, and because back in the day, that was their grand vision, and I, this is my personal opinion that I think that should be left alone forever, I suppose it could be it, I suppose, there it is right there, I suppose some of these folks wouldn't mind having a one-way, but the one-ways work, I meant, people are going to come through, right?
Well, unless it's offset.
So I, okay, that's just me, I just, I like to have the T intersection.
So right now, the town plows and maintains Park Street, correct?
Town owns Park Street, yes, they took over Park Street.
And once, are they going, is the plan for the town to take over what you're about to build?
Well, that would, yeah, they have to be, they built a town standard, yeah, it'd be town road, yeah, it would be, yeah, it'd be a major...
Do you have enough light there? Do you have enough light to see?
You want good light on, Jeff?
Yeah. Didn't know an update for what was in here, or is it...
What's that?
I don't remember the, yeah, I thought it went straight through.
Can we approve these one at a time, or do we have to read through them first?
What are you talking about?
The monst, various pieces of this.
Well, you might want to discuss the proposed standards language to see if you have any questions or concerns about that, that was a draft prepared by Woodard and Curran for your benefit. If you're satisfied with everything in there, then you could go right to your findings, and then, yes, if you do your findings, you're doing one at a time.
While we're still talking about this, as far as the standards go, did you all notice the section where they were talking about future plans of when that's connected Park Street to Broadway for directing the buses for the school routes and all that up there, did you see that?
What page are you on?
Eight dash two. I just thought that was a good idea for the school traffic and stuff, that's a good benefit.
I see you didn't have the water from Broadway to a loop down to Park Street.
What's that it? Yeah, the water connecting from Broadway instead of coming out Park Street, is that what you're asking?
It's not a loop.
It's not shown as a loop right now, right? It could be easily, it's just that lot, you know, currently, the water hits all the lots that are proposed, excuse me, but there's a pretty big section of Park Street that is, just to connect it up that way, it's a longer run with no locks there.
I should have mentioned earlier, by the way, that I sent out the plans to all the department directors for their comments, and didn't receive any concerns from any of them, but I did, the director of the wastewater treatment plant and an employee of Main Water commented that the, Main Water will be working closely with the developer to make certain that the installation complies with their requirements.
I don't know, as I read through, I couldn't find anything to object to.
It was just so well organized, I couldn't find anything either, it was just...
I thought it was full of some pretty good ideas.
Yeah.
Looking at the, I'll skip ahead a little bit to the erosion control, I had high hopes for looking at the maps and the plans for everything, right now, we get a bad storm and Route 1 floods out pretty hard at the bottom of Park Street and McDonald's and that area, so redirecting all of that could only be a positive for Route 1, so I was excited to see that.
Any other comments on the proposal and the application before we go to the findings of fact? The Bucksport Planning Board hereby makes the following findings of fact, before approving any subdivision application, the planning board must determine that the proposed subdivision complies with the criteria contained in Sections 9.2 through 9.16, and Sections 9.17 or 9.18 if applicable. The board's determination must be based on review of Section 8 and other requirements of this ordinance and state law. 9.2 are lots and blocks, which is covered in Section, I believe, 8.1.
Jeff was just suggesting, I do this by habit, but starting on Section 9.1, the criteria review, that's just my appraisal of how the subdivision meets the standard, so 8, Section 8 provides a lot of detail, and then Section 9 kind of gives you a draft finding again, because of my opinion, you guys have to read through it throughout.
Lots and blocks, the proposed subdivision contains lots that are appropriately laid out and are of adequate size to support the intended use, and if required, to be arranged in blocks, such lots are arranged to fit the topographical and geological character of the land and are safe and convenient to access.
So this subdivision actually doesn't have any proposed lots, but I'll just point out, there is one change to an existing lot, which I'm showing you now, Lot 27.
It was Lot 5 in the original subdivision.
Five, yeah, so this is the original lot line here, and it's been changed to encompass this fragment of land area that was created when the road was connected, so that lot has been changed, but it's just, it complies with the dimensional requirements of the ordinance.
Motion on lots and blocks?
I would motion that meets the criteria.
I would second that. All in agreement? Streets, the proposed subdivision will comply with the minimum construction requirements for any new street that is proposed for the subdivision, and will comply with the minimum construction requirements for any structural... and will comply with the minimum construction requirements for any structural improvements the applicant is required to perform on any public street or public easement utilized for access to the subdivision.
Make a motion as read.
Second.
In agreement? Traffic access and management. The proposed subdivision, one, will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. Two, has received approval from the Department of Transportation for driveways or entrances subject to Title twenty-three, MRSA seven oh four and any rules adopted under that section if applicable. And three, will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion and/or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public ways in an adjoining municipality if any part of the subdivision is located in that municipality.
Just a quick question on that, Jeff, if you have any input or, or even if you, uh, it says that that permit was granted in ninety-nine, there's no expiration on that, it's still all set?
Well, the permit was for the, um, the intersection of the road, putting the new road connected to the region, so there's no, there's no change to that.
Okay, so it just classifies as existing, so that's, okay, excellent, thank you. Make a motion to accept as read.
Second.
Okay. Approved? Carries? Utilities, the proposed subdivision will be provided with required utilities for each lot.
Second.
Does prove? Carries? Groundwater, the proposed sub- proposed subdivision, one, has sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. Two, will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply if one is to be utilized and three, will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
The whole thing is served by public fertility, I.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not utilizing groundwater unless maybe for, um, heat pumps in the future.
I assume it's gonna continue in the future up the other road.
Well, it's gonna extend on Broadway extension and then up the other extension above Broadway. But not down Park Street. There's a, there's a blank there. So.
I suppose some of the other properties around that have still got wells, I would.
Oh, jeez, I'd be surprised, I don't think.
All, all the lots have a good, uh, frontage to connect to, something called.
Yeah.
All of that, we're talking about the water connections, it said somewhere in here that there's five separate lots on that road right now.
Yeah.
So, that's not, that's not a, not a large amount of a drain on that.
Well, it depends what goes in there.
Yeah, but right now, right now, for building a road, that's, that's not, there's not a lot going on to change anything.
I don't think this impacts that at all, at all.
Motion to accept is read.
Second.
Approving? She carries? Wastewater, the proposed subdivision will provide for adequate wastewater disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipal wastewater disposal system if it is utilized. And I believe the town already commented that it would not.
Shouldn't move.
Was that a motion in a second?
Well, it was.
Okay.
There's something in the.
They were so close together.
So move.
Who did the second?
I'm trying to think. Park Street ties into the sewer on Main Street, but.
Move on.
I think somehow it does tie into behind Daniels and the main collector is not in Main Street, it's behind. I can't remember if there's a straight through to the sixteen inch.
I, 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 yeah, I think you're right, and, uh, uh, this sewer line would, would come, you know, straight down the, the road, the cul-de-sac versus the water. It was discussed with Dave, I believe, that, uh, you know, say a little bit, maybe you could go.
It may have gone over and tied.
I think it included pumping down, down, obviously there's a higher cost, so I think she's gravity all, I can't swear, I think she's gravity all the way.
There was a diagram of that in, uh, one of these, right?
But anyways, no, it.
I should tell you.
I think it's, it, it should be all right.
So, you're thinking to continue on Main Street and down to the main sewer, down on the shore.
Well, that answers our question.
Beview comes down Beview, goes along Main Street towards Alston Road, but then it cuts across and goes between, uh, those keys and.
I'll second George's motion.
Those keys, tomorrow, and, and gone. I think, uh, it's been gone.
That may be how it actually gets for this. All right, we have a second, approving?
Yep.
Motion carries?
It's all working now.
Solid waste. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized.
Maybe it'll get rid of it, though.
That's a, that's a good plan.
So move. Second.
Approving? Motion carries. Erosion control, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous and unhealthy or unhealthy conditions results and will provide for adequate stormwater management.
I just wanna hit on that real quick, that so, as many times as you and I have stood on Route One, just looking at the plans of this, I just, I'd hate to see this overlooked without acknowledging that this is not what I do, I don't look at a lot of plans, but looking at the maps and the plans that they drew out, it was very obvious that there's gonna be a lot of things put in place to redirect stormwater and take care of that. From everything that comes down that hill, that looked like there'd be a lot of.
Not really.
No, you don't think so? Why is that?
Because all the land slopes to that low point carry.
Right, well, right now, there's no, there's no development in that, in that road right now, there's, there's nothing, it's just open land and everything that they have in place. It looks like there's gonna be quite a lot of excavation and redirecting of the stormwater.
Through ditches and stuff.
Yeah, and spreaders.
The actual, uh, uh, wetlands delineations that are on the existing lots that are not part of the roadway, that doesn't change. Culverts and under the roadway and stuff, that. The only thing that's gonna be a little more, is a little more water up from, uh, non, im- non-previus land, which will be the road. That's the only thing you had.
So, do you think we're gonna have more flooding on Route One or less?
Um, I don't know, we'll have any, any change really.
Ms. Nicholson, did you wanna comment on the erosion?
Well, I was just curious about the, is that flooding, as a flooding, you're talking about the flooding that you were looking at.
McDonald's at times.
Yeah, that water.
It, it, it does clog up with debris.
So, my understanding is it's not really that there's a, there's too much runoff, forty miles of culvert that simply gets clogged.
I think that's basically it, right.
I'm not, I'm not blaming you, you know, maintenance right now.
Right, but if, if you're gonna put all that type of work into it to redirect all that stormwater, then that should help out with that.
So, what, so what we're providing, Jeff, can you show that one, the upper portion, um?
I thought we saw a lot of check dams going in.
Yeah, so the, these, uh, cross hatch areas are, um, buffers, um, and those, those are untouched land, so what's on, you're just required to say this is an area that's set aside and can't be developed or, or messed with, um, uh, that we provide treatment. So, the, the roadway is, the road is curved and there are, um, catch basins and culverts. So, these are, these are catch basins, uh, cross culvert, so water would run down the street, hit a catch basin, be directed across. Um, because this isn't showing the grading of the road, what's here is a little, uh, shallow, um, it's called a level spreader, so it's a shallow ditch where the water, it's like a little pool, the water fills up and then flows over, uh, flows through a kind of a rock check dam. It's, it's shown on the erosion control plans, uh, and then, and then flows into the, into the buffer. So, the buffers are sized, um, you know, according to D E P rules and what this does is pulls out sediment that tends to run with the water. But it also, um, does encourage infiltration, so you're gonna get a layer of the pavement, which is what you were saying, Ed, you're, you're putting in, um, impervious surface, so you have more runoff, but then you, by breaking it up into these periodic, um, buffers, you then get infiltration. So, the overall balance is basically the same and we're not touching anything, you know, below the cul-de-sac, so.
Well, the problem is below the cul-de-sac.
Right, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't represent, it certainly shouldn't represent an increase. And my understanding is that there's really no problem with the, um, with the stormwater, uh, on, on the existing part of the subdivision. And I kind of stumbled there for a second because there was, could you now go back to show the, um, the lower part, just where the cul-de-sac is? Right, so.
No, down at the end of section.
No, 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 this is actually what I wanna show. Um, there was a, well, actually slide up a little bit this way, sort of tilt a little bit up, yeah, there we go. So, there, there were, when the, when the Woods Road was put in, a couple culverts were set in, um, the Woods Road's actually, you know, runs a little bit, it's not, the, the new road's not being put in over the Woods Road, Woods Road's a little bit further down here. And, um, two cul- two cross culverts were put in and over time, one of those culverts lifted. Um, and so the streams that ran, the stream that ran through there kind of redirected itself up through this wetland area. Um, and, and then there was apparently a, a big storm in, uh, anyway, one of those big winter storms. Um, and water was screaming down the hill, this is how I heard it. Uh, and so the town came in and basically dug a ditch across, there's a, dug, dug a ditch across the, um, the Woods Road uh, up above the top of the cul-de-sac to help direct that water from not going this way, but instead going this way. So, this is sort of a, this part of the stream kind of created itself and then it, then the town helped at this end. Um, but when all was said and done, um, the, one of these culverts has already been removed and the other one will be removed. Um, so that the, the stream that was originally there that kind of runs down from here will reestablish itself. This will still be a wetland up here, but this stream flow really won't be active. Um, there's, there's a culvert there anyway, but, um, it, it should just go back to the way that the flow, blinding myself, the flow was. So, anyway, that's just a, um, little story about the different culverts. If I may.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, also, late summer, early fall, the area that you're, uh, speaking to, uh, Main D O T's got a two-inch mill and fill on U S Route One. The town has met with them earlier, it's gonna continue, right now it's from, um, Olden going down towards Surrey, it's gonna come back towards the bridge. So, anything that may be standing water when it was rated in that area, that's gonna be milled and filled this, this year. At the entrance to Park Street by McDonald's.
I think that would be the biggest fix of all, the best fix of all, I guess.
Any fix?
Yeah, anything.
I was just excited to see so much thought put into it, somebody do something.
Also, out of that contract, uh, the section from the back-up road to, uh, the mill is, is gonna be reconstructed. Gonna be working nice on this end and, so the back-up to the front gate of the mill.
Yeah, oh, wow.
You know, how soft those shoulders are.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, next section, buffers. The proposed subdivision. Oh, we didn't vote on it.
Motion to accept is draft.
Second.
Approve, um, approving?
Thank you for that expectation.
And, um, next section, buffers, the proposed subdivision will have adequate buffers to minimize the impact of development on adjacent properties and natural resources.
So move. Second.
Approving?
Since there's no lots being developed, points move.
Right. Natural resources, the proposed subdivision has identified on any map submitted as part of the application all potential freshwater wetlands within the subdivision regardless of the size of those wetlands and any river, stream or brook within the, within or abutting the proposed subdivision.
Make a motion as read.
Second.
Approving? Carries? I didn't finish reading that, oh, the proposed subdivision will not, there's two parts. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution in making this determination. The board has considered the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to the flood plains, nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluents, the availability of streams for disposal of effluents and the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations.
Second page. Yeah, there's a few on there.
Did you mean to, uh, do more? Do we have a motion on this? Comment? Any comment on soils?
Make a motion as read for natural resources number two.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Three, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of any pond or lake or unreasonably affect the shoreline of any pond or lake wherever the subdivision is situated entirely or partially within the watershed of that pond or lake or within two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland, great pond or river as defined in Title thirty-eight, Chapter three, Subchapter one, Article two B.
I mean that that's gonna address by design.
Second.
Approve? Motion carries? Four, the proposed subdivision will not unreasonably increase a great pond's phosphorus and concentration during the construction phase and life of the subdivision. It does not drain into a great pond, it drains into the river.
You might find this one to be not applicable.
Yeah, I believe this is applicable.
That should be a motion, though.
Yeah, okay.
I would motion that this section is not applicable.
Second.
Approving? Five, the proposed subdivision is not located on a parcel of land that has been owned by the applicant for less than five years which has been harvested in violation of Main Forest Service rules pertaining to liquidation harvesting.
Second.
And approved. Motion carries? Six, the proposed subdivision will have no lot with the depth, no lot with a lot depth to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one for any lots in the proposed subdivision that have shore frontage on a river, stream, brook, great pond, or coastal wetland as these features are defined in Title thirty-eight, Section four eighty B.
Move that's not applicable.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Scenic and historic areas, the pro sub, a proposed subdivision will not have any undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, or the municipality rare or irreplaceable natural areas, or on any public rights or physical or visual access to the shoreline.
So move.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Floodplain management. The proposed subdivision includes a condition on the plat that requires principal structures in the subdivision to be constructed with their lowest floor, including the basement, at least one foot above the one-hundred-year flood elevation. The plat also identifies the one-hundred-year flood elevation and flood hazard boundaries within the subdivision. These requirements are applicable if any part of the subdivision is in a flood hazard area as identified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood boundary and floodway maps and flood insurance rate maps.
This parcel is not in a flood hazard area.
Yeah, not applicable. We need a motion though?
Yeah.
Motion that's not applicable. Second.
Approving? Motion carries is not applicable. Reserved land. The proposed subdivision includes an appropriately sized area dedicated to open space or recreational use and an area designated for municipal use as may be required.
A motion to accept.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's any change. Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Financial and technical pa, capacity. The proposed subdivision will be developed by an applicant who has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this ordinance.
Move accept.
Second.
Approving? Perfect. Motion carries? Soning and land use. The proposed subdivision conforms with all applicable provisions of the Bucksport Town Code and the town's adopted comprehensive plan.
Motion as read.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Cluster development. The proposed subdivision, if reviewed as a cluster development, conforms with all applicable provisions of the Bucksport Town Code and the town's adopted comprehensive plan.
That's not applicable.
Do we have a motion that this, this section is not applicable?
Motion not applicable.
And a second.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Mobile home parks. The proposed subdivision, if reviewed as a mobile home park, conforms with all applicable provisions of the Bucksport Town Code and the town's adopted comprehensive plan.
Move that's not applicable.
Second.
Approving? Motion carries? Based on the above stated findings of fact, the planning board has determined that the subdivision application fully complies with the requirements of the Bucksport subdivision ordinance and is hereby granted approval. Do we have a motion for approval?
I have motion for approval.
Second.
Approving?
Approved.
Yep. Copies for them to sign.
I mean, yes. I do.
Yeah. Where did she put them? Oh, they're up there.
I thank you people and, uh, I'd like the little caduce of Sarah.
Really? Great job.
Very thorough and she only tried to be minimum wage. She promised me.
Yeah, that's good.
You believe that, Steve?
Yeah, almost.
Just accept the minimum wage part.
Yeah. It's always good news when Jeff calls and sends out a package to big to mail.
Jeff, these are paper.
Yeah, can, can you print those on Mylar? If they, with signed copy?
Um, can I print them on Mylar?
After they sign the paper copy, can?
Uh, I think so.
But you didn't bring a Mylar with you?
The last time we printed Mylar was a while ago. But I will, um, let's sign them and, uh, open them and if I've gotta come back with a different set of them.
Does the registry require, does the registry require polyester tone?
We just don't do it so often anymore.
So it's not a requirement at the registry?
They used to be on sheepskin.
Now, if someone who's fairly new to this planning board thing, it's so nice to be given so much information because I need this information.
Yeah.
Isn't it, isn't it great? It really is nice.
Absolutely not, no. It's nice to be given this much information.
It was twice as thick as that.
Really? Yeah.
We've become certified business friendly since that time.
I was on the.
Certified as business friendly since that time.
So you don't need a marker, we're just doing. Just regular pad works on that paper. Okay, it's right here? Is this where we're doing it?
Yeah.
Could you write the date too, Steve, on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we just put the, I don't see a spot for the date on this. These are different than the ones we've done before here. Yeah, your eyes, take a look at that. Crazy, everything on, you know, the campus, you're gonna rush.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that it needs to. So, um, we'll do this and if this doesn't.
Is it two sheets that are signed or just one?
Come to the next meeting.
Uh, I just signed one.
If you can't reproduce that, I don't like it.
Yeah, there's two sheets, but there's sort of a different.
One is the plan.
I just didn't know.
Is there a completion date for this?
Let me see, George.
There you go.
Jeff, is there a completion date for this? Is there a goal in mind?
Um, the hope is to, is to do the work of this.
I have trouble doing mine, okay?
Yeah?
Nope, not on that second. Steve, is this yours?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Oh, it's probably mine. That's mine.
Yeah, sure, you picked up another pen today.
That's right.
Ready to move on? Mr. Chair, you ready to move on?
Yes, I'm ready. All right. Moving on, administrative business. A request from, from Regulatory Review Committee to amend Appendix K land use ordinance to change the minimum parking stall size from ten by twenty to nine by eighteen.
So that, I, I have prepared some draft changes for you that include that proposed change as well as a couple of other things I discovered that were overlooked accidentally when we did our last amendment to deal with schools. And so I'm starting off by showing you the, in Section eight point five point three. That's, this, in Section eight, there, there's a section that describes all the categories and the uses that are in that category. And that wasn't changed, it should've been changed and it wasn't, so this is the, is the proposed change to delete that and all these things here and just refer to schools. And likewise, in Section thirteen four, the, those outdated labels were left in as well, so those are deleted in this draft. And school remains. And in Section thirteen fifteen eight two is where the proposed change from ten by twenty to nine by eighteen is shown.
So that would be town-wide?
Yeah.
This applies to any, any vehicle parking space in a parking lot.
Okay.
And the last change was another inadvertent mission that dealt with the, the new standard that was added to deal with accessibility in, in Section twelve. Section fifteen is where you do your findings and that was left off, so that the findings for accessibility has been added. And that's it for proposed changes.
That makes sense.
Go back to, uh, back in lots, back in size.
Yeah, it was previously.
Now, you're changing it from nine by eighteen to ten by twenty?
No, just, just reverse.
No, we're getting smaller. Fit more cars, not less.
Cause that was, that was an issue at a previous meeting that, that was engineered for nine by eighteen, but the town ordinance said ten by twenty.
Yep, that's right.
And there's really, and there was no need because the tat, the ones on Main Street, I don't think, I don't think Main Street, is, is Main Street nine by eighteen? Or is, or is Main Street even smaller?
I haven't measured them to see, I don't know. They probably are.
Fifty-nine by eighteen.
Yeah. Right, so whatever we're doing as a town and whatever the smallest one the town's doing should be the, be the standard.
The, the town's first land use ordinance actually had, uh, a standard of nine by twenty.
Okay.
And when the ordinance was amended in two thousand and ten, for reasons that I don't recall, uh, the width was widened by one foot and the length was kept the same.
And, and the state uses nine by eighteen?
Well, I think that's, that's a typical, that's a typical size that fits most vehicles.
That's the average.
You might find larger SUVs and large pickup trucks might be challenged to get in a space that's occupied on either side.
Yeah.
There's only one example I know of in town that has ten by twenty and that's the Central Street parking lot. Right behind, uh, McLeod's.
Yeah.
Those are ten by twenty spaces.
Okay.
But every other parking lot I've looked at on Google seems to be nine by eighteen in Bucksport.
Yeah, that would make sense, especially for our previous applicant. They wouldn't have to re, re-engineer or reconfigure their, their parking spaces for anything.
You'll have to, i- if you, if this ends up being approved, and obviously you have to go through the process, you, you approve the M M A application with the condition that the plan be changed to ten by twenty spaces. So you're gonna have to go back and, and re, if you want to eliminate that condition, that has to be an act you'd have to take.
Yeah. Well, the idea at that time when we were, when we were talking about that was because that's what the town ordinance had.
Yes, exactly.
That's what was specified. So, I mean, where does common sense take us here?
With common sense, we'd say that we could vote under right now and offer to him tomorrow.
All right, let's do that then. Well, how long will it take to get this approved, to get it down to the nine by eighteen?
Well, you have to hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
And then it goes to the town council, they do two readings.
Yeah.
And they can hold a public hearing if they want to, they don't have to. So it's, it'll be at least three meetings, probably over the next month and a half. Once it's approved, it's effective seven days later.
Yeah. Well, I guess if that's the spacing that's on Main Street, I don't, I just don't see why we would have to require anything else larger from anyone else. Do you have any input on this, Rick?
Well, I do because you're talking about two different things. You're talking about parking lots and parking spaces.
Okay.
Main Street, what we're talking there is parking spaces. And when the town, uh, got approval to add parking spaces, uh, across from the building that Mr. Nichols purchased where Lewis and Maum Architecture is located, so it's right outside of Gary Sawyer's place.
Okay.
The town added five parking spaces. D O T gave us approval to make those spaces eight by twenty with the caveat that the middle spaces were eight by twenty-two, so that a large vehicle had the opportunity to back up and move out.
Okay, and those are.
Parking lots are different though.
Those are parallel spaces, right?
Those are parallel spaces, that's correct.
All right.
The ends could be eight by twenty. They give us, uh, special approval to do that.
Yeah.
But parking lots are, are different and they are defined differently with the D O T.
Yours is being pushed by the open lane tween two parallel parking lots. If it's not twenty-four feet, then you have to do something to make movement work. So you could, you could expand to the twenty-two.
Yeah.
Give room.
But, but that's the difference, that's where it is, cause there's spaces, which is what Main Street would be and then there's lots, which would be Central Street Lot and then the M M A parking lot.
So, so this provision here, as you see on the screen, pertains to parking spaces in parking lots, not on streets, it's in a parking lot.
Right.
And also to point out that we have a minimum width for an internal travel aisle in a parking lot of twenty feet.
Yeah.
Uh, my view of the parking lots that we have in town now suggests that most of them have wider travel aisles, twenty-four feet, sometimes wider than that.
Yeah.
Uh, but we only record twenty.
Most everything I see on site where, I see a lot of plans, is basically sixty feet. You've got eighteen, twenty-four, eighteen. So you've got two spaces, twenty-four, that's sixty foot. And, and you can break up areas into sixty-foot lanes, do all your way up quite, quite easily that way. I see a lot of them, just like that.
So what?
This is saying that's nine by eighteen minimum, you can make them any size you want.
Right.
Right.
Right, if you establish a minimum, you always make them bigger.
Yeah.
Parking lots are.
It's saying it will, will be nine by eighteen.
Parking lots are always designed for maximum.
And this change came up because of lot space, because as people are gonna be doing development, there's only so much space to work with for the minimum spaces, parking spaces required. And to reduce the parking space size, it helps with that. Is that why this came, why it's coming before us? Do we know?
There really wasn't, uh, a discussion of this at the regulatory review. It was a, it was a request made by the mayor, who was, who was at that meeting.
Yeah.
That, uh, this be brought forward to you for your review.
Yeah.
The nine by eighteen is pretty much ended there.
Yeah. It is. Yeah, so.
I believe this is also under main uniform, traffic comes to.
Probably.
Probably. And over the years, cars are becoming smaller.
Right.
This is a car from the seventies and the cars today, about half the size.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Trucks are.
So we just need to approve by a majority or we need to go ahead?
Not yet, we have to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Which will be at your next meeting.
All right, sounds good.
Yep.
And that'll be forwarded to the town council.
All right, simple enough. Sounds good.
Okay.
Any further discussion on parking lot size? If not, uh, any discussion? If no, then ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, guys. We be adjourned.